We would now reconvene to open meeting. Now certification please.
Whereas the Akamak County School Board has convened a closed meeting on the pursuit of an affirmative vote and in accordance with provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and where as section 2.1-3771D, the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore may be resolved that the Akamak County School Board hereby certifies that due to best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
There's a motion in second to certify a closed meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? May I have roll call please?
President?
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 Mr. Smith.
Here.
Andy.
Here.
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 Whitey.
President.
Ms. Taylor.
Here.
Here.
Next up is the approval of the minutes for the meeting vote for 14. We'll announce the results.
........................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................ All right, good evening. I'm Phyllis Smith, the Akamak County Public Schools NNDCC Naval Science Instructor, for those of you who do not know me. We do appreciate the invitation to come out tonight to share our Hawaiian trip experiences. I'm gonna have them go ahead and introduce themselves right now.
I'm Larry Handy.
I'm Julie Winnens.
I'm Ethan Sacks.
I'm Jordan Penlin.
I'm Jacob Delgado.
I'm Will Jones.
I'm Charles Whitlock.
I'm NDC Quinceañera.
I'm Tashi Yana-Johnson.
I'm Daniel Moreno-Hernandez.
Alrighty. So they're gonna share their own personal takeaways, but before they do, I just wanted to start off by thanking everyone who helped make this trip possible. I'm happy to say it is a long list, but it shouldn't take me long to express our thanks. I wanna start off by thanking everyone who helped provide our cadets with an opportunity of a lifetime. Our area lieutenant, first of all.
It's Michael Miss Smith, I'm sorry.
Didn't sound like it was.
I don't think I'm gonna have to do it.
Is it? Thank you. It didn't sound like it was, but everybody heard me, right? Heard us, okay. Thank you so much. I wanna start off by thanking everyone who helped provide our cadets with an opportunity of a lifetime. It actually started out with our area lieutenant offering the trip to our cadets, which I was very happy, especially that we were a new unit, so didn't think we would qualify to even be to get an invite. I also wanted to thank Dr. Hall and Ms. Taylor for the initial approval. I wanna thank you, our school board, for all the support that you provided us from paying our airfare. Members of the school board also donated monies, thank you, we really appreciate that. Upon returning from our trip, we were informed that Title V funds were approved to pay the eighteen thousand nine hundred eighty-eight dollars for our room accommodations. Howdy, y'all! Yes, thank the Lord. Our PR supported our cadets as well in many ways, including participation in our fundraisers and monetary donations. I also wanted to thank Commissioner Handy for working diligently to enhance our experience while in Hawaii, and because of it, we have made connections for upcoming field trips in the spring of this year with those connections. I also want to continue to thank Ms. Karen Taylor, our school administrators, our Arcadia High School staff and the students, staff across the county, community members supported our mission also by participating in our fundraisers. Mr. Tac Sabatina even showed up to try to teach her of his how to wash cars. Ms. Pargarian and her brother who doesn't even live here spent a few hundred dollars on our Joe Corby's fundraiser, and Mr. O'Shea does what Mr. O'Shea does, and that is to provide support wherever it is needed to help us reach our goals. Basically, it was a community effort, as it should be when it comes to supporting our students. Most importantly, I am grateful that we made it back here, there, and back here safely, and I can truly say that this trip has created lasting memories from connections our cadets made with others and by embracing new experiences. A gift that you can give, but you can't take away from them. I hope I did not leave anyone out, and I will now turn it over to them.
Hi, everyone. So like I said, my name is Jordan Penlin. I'm the battalion commander of the NNDCC program, and yeah, I hope that you guys enjoyed our So here on the first slide, you will see, this is about the Pearl Harbor Day Parade. So the parade was about a mile long. We marched from where our hotel was all the way down to like the end of it, and it was a really awesome experience. We got to take place like in the opening ceremony, and we got to hear from the oldest living survivors speak and tell a story, and it was really unique, so.
So we do wanna go, can we go back to that? We do just wanna go ahead and give you a little snippet of the parade. If you could just play just a little bit, if you don't mind, about two to three seconds of it.
Customized and saved with Liberty Mutual! And right behind them, Area 309 High School Junior Rotsie Cadets. The annual Pearl Harbor Memorial Parade in Hawaii features marching... Stop cheering, you did it. No. Okay, right behind them, Area 309 High School Junior Rotsie Cadets. The annual Pearl Harbor Memorial Parade in Hawaii features marching bands, classic cars, military representations of all branches, dancers, floats, balloons, musicians, performances by cheer teams, and much more. This year, there were a total of eighty-five entrants in the Pearl Harbor Memorial Parade, which was held this past Saturday, December 7th. Thousands of spent...
Thank you. I think this went up. Testing, okay. So I just real briefly wanna just share that I'm so proud of them, a brand-new unit. I think we've only been in session for three months, and they stood with the best of them. Those were very established units, years-old, so I was so proud of them.
Hi, I'm doing the dhole plantation, and the dhole plantation was founded by James Drummond Dole, who was a Harvard graduate, who on vacation to Hawaii studied some of the soil and found out that the volcanic soil actually helped with making pineapples sweeter and grow better. So when he graduated from Harvard, he decided that he wanted to move to Hawaii and start a pineapple plantation, and so he did.
At the Polynesian Cultural Center, we learned that there is actually a hundred and thirty-seven islands in Hawaii, but six main ones. Six main ones. Tonga, Tahiti, Samoa, Fiji, Altral, and of course Hawaii. In the section of Hawaii, we saw a big canoe, one that they take out one to two, three months a year, every year, and they take students on it to learn navigating the stars and the water and everything like that.
I'll be continuing to talk about the Polynesian Cultural Center. There were two major parts after we had went through the walkthrough of the Polynesian Cultural Center. One being my personal favorite, most people's personal favorite, a buffet. So they had variety of food there, including some tropical fruit like pineapple and dragon fruit, which were really tasty, so if you ever go to Honolulu, go to the Polynesian Cultural Center. Second, my most favorite part of all of the cultural center is the show. It was called The Breath of Life. As you can see, that middle picture right there is the stage of the show, about half a football field, pretty big. Amazing part about it though is with the show, it starts from the childhood of the child in Hawaii all the way up to marriage. And so they had a child that was five-year-old, like five years old, there acting in front of over a hundred people, and it was pretty cool. They also had, one of the things you should definitely go and see in Hawaii, you definitely know if you went and saw Lee Lowen Stitch, is fire knife dancers. Those are the people who swirl the fire on sticks and stuff, they have very high tolerance for that kind of stuff. That's all I'd like to say.
We're gonna be talking about the USS Arizona, or the USS Missouri looking over the USS Arizona in the moment. The highest-ranking officer killed during the attack on the USS Arizona, Admiral Isaac Seacade, was in charge of battleship Division One during the attack on Pearl Harbor, and his flagship was the USS Arizona.
One thousand one hundred seventy-seven sailors and marines would be killed on the USS Arizona, approximately only three hundred and thirty-three survived.
And the last known survivor of the USS Arizona died April 1st of 2024 and was buried with his wife.
Over nine hundred sailors and marines are still entombed in the Arizona.
And to this day, oil is still seeping from the ship into the harbor, and they like to, they like to show it as it's the cries of the men that died on the ship.
The USS Missouri looks over the USS Arizona, it's symbolic of the guard and the entombed sailors and marines.
All right, the attack on Pearl Harbor. December 7th, 1941, a date which President Roosevelt said would live in infamy. Six Japanese aircraft carriers with over ninety planes on each would launch two waves of attacks on Pearl Harbor. Four battleships were sunk, five if you include a old battleship that was turned into a training ship. The first wave attacked the battleship California, Oklahoma, and West Virginia launching torpedoes at it. Oklahoma had lost five hundred sailors, she took about seventeen, no, seven, seven torpedoes, and she capsized, and there would still be sailors trapped inside of her, and they would try and cut it open, but unfortunately their efforts were not successful. West Virginia and California, they would both have a similar fate and would rest to the bottom of Pearl Harbor due to counterflooding, and they would not, would not capsize like Oklahoma and were able to be salvaged. Oklahoma would be scrapped at the end of the war, it could no longer use, it would be its last fight. The second wave of Japanese aircraft would be used to attack the inboard battleships that were not vulnerable to torpedoes, Maryland, Tennessee, Arizona, and Nevada. Maryland and Tennessee were only hit by a couple of bombs, not severe damage. Arizona was hit with a five-hundred-pound armor-piercing bomb that pierced the forward magazine of the fourteen-inch guns, went all the way down to the bottom of the barbed net, and hit where the powder charges are stored and the shells, and it had a massive explosion, which killed one thousand one hundred and seventy-seven sailors and marines. A massive inferno would cover the Arizona, you couldn't even see it, and seventeen minutes later, she rested to the bottom of Pearl Harbor and where she sits today. And the USS vessel, which was a repair ship alongside the Arizona, was trying to rescue crew members who were trying to get out of the oil fire that was in the water, and USS Nevada, which was right behind the explosion, was the only ship able to move during the attack, was hit by a torpedo, and it beached itself at Hospital Point, so it would not block the channel for future salvage efforts, so you know, it wouldn't take more time to recover all the battleships, and yeah. And when the Arizona blew up, shrapnel flew all over Battleship Row, all the way to California, and yeah. And four of those Japanese aircraft carriers that were used during the attack would be sunk by the Americans during the Battle of Midway, so yeah.
So that was a wealth of knowledge. He even led some of the tour, got information as we were walking through, just so you know.
Next up, we're gonna talk about the free time. Free time was not just about having fun. The last night before we departed, Cadet Whitlock suggested we take some time to reflect. He had each of us, including Ms. Smith and Mr. Thompson, gathered in a circle, sharing what we enjoyed the most about the trip. This experience allowed us to get to know each other better and learn each other's replies on how much it meant to be a part of the Hawaii trip. It was a heartwarming moment for all of us cadets.
During our free time, we got to spend a lot of time with each other, and we got to explore the cities in Hawaii. We were able to shop for gifts and go to various ABC stores, which sold different things and merchandise, different things. Some even sold food, nothing like the ABC store.
Nothing like ours, man, nothing, nothing like ours. It's like a Walmart.
We also got to, on the, I think, on the second day or the third, we went to the beach. We left in the morning, the weather was nice, we walked to the beach, we were swimming and enjoying the water for about an hour. After that, we walked around to look for some stores for food, and I think, like, a couple of days before we left, we went, we woke up in the morning, we went to see the sunrise behind the mountain on the top left picture. It was very beautiful.
Thank you guys for listening to our presentation, and as you can see in some of those pictures, we all became really good friends, and it was a really good bonding experience, and it's a trip of a lifetime, of a lifetime, so thank you guys.
Thank you all very much, I'm glad it was a really memorable experience, and I'm sure they got a lot out of it, and when I get home, I'm gonna watch the whole parade. All right, thank you so much again. Thank you all.
I get the sense that there were parents and perhaps gardeners and such in the audience. Could they just stand briefly?
Oh, definitely, please do. They, we are a family. Yeah, saving with us the entire time, thank you so much. Thank you.
I need like a proud dad moment, I need a picture for the basing book, so all you over there, just like a picture. These are students that are from both Nandu and Arcadia High School, so it's not just Arcadia students. Sometimes people forget that, but this is a regional program that supports the entire school division. You guys are good, don't break my camera. Ms. Smith, ready? All right, there we go, perfect. Hold on. Everyone at home just got that one. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I've sent out my federal program report, I didn't know if there were any questions. It's not the tense time of year, so we're just moving along. I also wanted to report on our ERP. I've been giving you updates all along, and our last payday was the January 16th, last Thursday. That was our first payday, and it was successfully completed on our new system. So we were able to send the bank deposit thing out on a Tuesday night, such that many people got paid on Wednesday, which was a day early, but that does happen with credit unions and USAA as it is. But it also gave us a chance, because on the old system, if you sent payday out and there was a mistake, you had to wait two weeks until the next payday. So we found that there were about thirty-seven people who weren't paid. These were all a problem with an interface of a timesheet for cafeteria substitutes, teacher substitutes, and custodian substitutes. So the good thing is, is that we were able to process it again on Wednesday night, and they were paid on Thursday, which was the actual payday. So by Friday, I think we just had three, so we actually did three little payrolls into one, but we had three by Friday, and when all else fails, we can issue a manual check, and it all goes in the payday. It will be so much nicer once we get it completely. There's so many more steps to come, there's an employee portal, there's live tracking of leave, there's a lot more things to come. We were just trying to get people paid for the first time. And the report that Dr. Johnson had me look at, that is our first accounts payable. We actually split up into two teams, because we didn't wanna just work on payroll and then have accounts payable fall behind, because we had to keep the lights on and the telephone ringing, and so we split up into two teams, and the report that you had me look at tonight, Dr. Johnson, that was the first report from this ERP system, and since those vouchers were approved, those checks will be printed by us tomorrow and then. So we have a lot of, I won't tell you all, but we had a lot of things that we didn't foresee would be so, would affect this implementation. One of them was switching insurance and the entire platform that the board, that the employee signs up on when we switched from United Healthcare to Anthem. Another one was the class and comp study, because you have to keep going back and changing the rates and maintain two systems at once. And another was VRS pay schedules. They changed the pay schedule this past summer, and we were struggling with that anyway, much less converting it to the new system. So in the middle of all that, we also had personnel losses, either by sickness or injury, and we had a number of people out two or three months, we had to actually train new people in accounts payable. So our staff worked incredibly hard, I wanna recognize Dwayne Gladine and Sonya Riggins, probably worked seven days a week, with the exception of maybe New Year's and Christmas, for probably about five to six weeks. And then in addition, Stephanie Ratliff, Carl West, Kristy Davis, and I know all my others, Cindy Galapos, Donna Phillips, and Tracy Ridley. So it was a team effort, and I'm very, very proud of them, because I have to admit, there were times that I didn't think it was gonna happen, so I am very proud.
You know you're gonna have that beast behind you, now is that, is that part of payroll? Now is that, is that part of payroll part, is that, is that the largest or the hardest?
The payroll was the worst.
So the things that get added now would be nearly as.
Right, we had ten less pay, we had different VRS pay, we had different pay rates. You couldn't use um the same employee ID numbers, some of them were the same, some of them were not, depending on what they did. So it was hours upon hours upon hours, and took, took a whole lot of group effort. But we're still doing, we'll still be introducing new, uh you know, facets of this as the year progresses. Still have a lot of work ahead, but the good thing is, is we can do accounts payable and we can do payroll.
Thank you. Next up is um staff budget presentations.
Carol's gonna go first.
Thank you, everybody.
So I'm Mrs. Wheeler, um principal at Akamak Elementary School, and I want to say thank you to the board for allowing um the principals to present their budget um this year. I understand from my colleagues that um principals uh previously had not been able to personally present their budget requests, so on behalf of everybody, I say thank you. Uh for Akamak's budget request, um the, for the first request is a mobile unit. Um I requested a mobile unit, because as it stands now, we have our music class on the stage. Um, this is a safety concern, if there was ever an active shooter or some other emergency, the students that are on the stage with their teacher do not have a safe area to go to. Besides that, during lunchtime, um it gets very noisy in the cafeteria, so when there is a music class on stage, they're competing to be heard, between the noise in the cafeteria as well as um the noise that the music um class makes. But honestly, the real focus is on safety. Um, we have to think of safety first, and I believe this is our number one um budget request, is getting a mobile unit, so we can move our music room to a mobile unit. Um, right now, Akamak is out of classrooms, um we're utilizing every available space at Akamak Elementary. My second budget request are um new stage curtains. These stage curtains are original to the school. As far as I know, they have never been cleaned, um they are very filled with dust. This summer, when I did um take over principalship, I asked to have some of the um the small curtains taken down and see if they could be um washed. I guess they basically fell apart when they were tried to be washed, um and they weren't any good. Um, a lot of the uh curtains are torn, they're ripped. Um, when we do family engagement nights, um and we use some, some of the stage, it's very obvious that they're torn. They don't present a good look for Akamak Elementary School. Along with that, they're filled with dust and allergens. Again, this is a safety issue, we have a lot of students that have asthma, as well as other medical um issues, and I think that having curtains that are filled with dust and allergens that haven't been cleaned for many years, um it's not a healthy environment for students. The third request is a new speaker and sound system. Um, we do have an old sound system, original to the school. Um, we have the Bose speakers that you see here at Matonkin, and then a large sound system um behind the stage. This is a very old system, it has um cassette tape decks, um it does have like a radio, um ours is very hard to get to work, you really can't tune into a radio station. Our mics um don't work all the time, we've tried to fix it up a little bit. Um, we would really appreciate a new sound system, we have family events. As a new principal, I'm trying to get um new clubs started, one is a drama club, and to have the drama club, we really would like to have a new sound system. As well as when we perform musicals, um winter concerts, spring concerts, that sort of thing, um graduation celebrations. We do have a portable speaker, um but when you have a portable speaker up near the stage, it's very difficult, um we use that for concerts, and it's very hard for the students on the stage to hear the music and for them to be singing. Um, you get kind of a cross mix of communication, and then either the parents sitting out here, um all they hear is the music, they can't hear the students, so it becomes a little bit of a, a mess. My fir-, uh my fourth request is an electric screen, such as what you see here at Matonkin. Um, both Nando and Middle, and I believe Arcadia Middle, have a screen that comes down from the ceiling um and is on their stage. I'm not sure if it was original to the middle schools, um I've kind of looked into that, I got some answers yes, some answers no. Right now, we only have a small portable screen. This is an issue when we hold parent and family engagement nights. Um, it's very difficult for parents to see anything that we put up on the screen. When we have assemblies and have to use the screen, again, it's very small, and when we fill up the cafeteria with students, they have a hard time seeing. So I think um, I'm requesting equity throughout the school system, for us to have a pull-down in an electric screen that comes down from the ceiling. And that's all my quest, my requests. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Mrs. Field, Matonkin Elementary School Principal. Um, I want to echo Ms. Wheeler and say thank you for allowing us tonight to speak about our budget. It is definitely new, um a new opportunity that I was quite excited about. My first budget request is an additional reading specialist for Matonkin. And I have tried to back up my request with as much data as possible, because I understand that we lost some children from Matonkin last year, and legitimately, you would ask me, why do you need another reading specialist, because you lost children? And my biggest comment to you is, it's not about quantity, it's about quality. Um, yes, we, we did lose students last year, but based on, I'm sure you've all heard about the Virginia Literacy Act over and over and over again. Uh, the Virginia Literacy Act is mandatory for all Virginia schools. So we give a test called VALS, which is a screener for um reading proficiency, and that goes kindergarten, first, second, third grade. Next year, it will involve fourth and fifth grade, we'll be moving the VLA into grades four and five. We, we currently, let me say that, we currently have one reading specialist here at Matonkin, and she services uh kids for five. Out of the two hundred and seventy students that were screened in kindergarten through third grade, one hundred and forty-eight of our children were found to be at high risk, which entails lots of um, lots of steps that we have to follow, which the biggest one is two and a half hours per week of remediation given by a highly qualified reading specialist or teacher. So out of those two hundred and seventy students, I have seventy-four students who were at moderate risk, only twenty-eight who were at low risk. So you can see where we have to put our money. Um, my reading specialist currently sees thirty-two kids. She is busy from the moment she walks in the morning till the very end of the day. To be perfectly honest with you, I don't know how she keeps up with it. Um, we have currently, we have one reading specialist who services all the students. We use step two, one was moved to Arcadia Middle School this year, and has really greatly impacted us since the VLA. Uh, one reading specialist provides the professional development for all of the VLA. She monitors the requirements for teachers for the VLA. She works with the targeted population of students, those one hundred and forty-eight kids. She assists with student reading plans. Any student who was found to be at high risk must have a student reading plan, which is basically an IEP, Reading for Reading, um and includes goals and, and services. Our teachers are brand new at this, as is everybody else, so um our reading specialist was in the trenches, writing those plans with the teachers, meeting with parents, um coming up with interventions. She assists with um all the data we need for school-based intervention team meetings. She gathers reading data for myself, she oversees all of the parent tutors that are here at Matonkin, as well as other duties. If we want to continue to see these VALS scores improve, if we need kids reading on grade level when they get to grade three, we need some help. Our fourth and fifth grade reading teachers have not had any help from the reading specialist this year. She is primarily working with VALS and everybody who's included on this end. Um, so I ask for a reading specialist here at Matonkin. My second request is a little different, I guess. Um, we love our STEM lab, and you got to see it tonight, um for closed session, and we have a great in- instructional assistant who works in the STEM lab. Um, we are requesting to have a certified teacher in the STEM lab to help us meet our science accreditation by working collaboratively with our science teachers, and doing things that our IA should not be and cannot do, based on her position. Um, my STEM lab IA writes lesson plans, she collaborates with teachers, and she puts in a lot of time, and she gets paid as an IA. And it bothers, it bothers me, it bothers a lot of us here at Matonkin, because we see the effort she puts forth. And she is working as a teacher, and she is getting paid as an IA. So thinking about that, and thinking about our, our yellow area in, in science here at Matonkin, we brainstorm things that uh this certified teacher could do, such as create benchmark assessments that align with our curriculum. She could work on unit plans with our classroom teachers, lesson plans. She can provide PD to our teachers. Uh, we currently are um working, you know, our school improvement plan this year is all about science, and we are working on different methodologies of teaching science K five. That would be something that this person could certainly help us out with. Okay, number three is another personnel request, and that would be a guidance secretary. I know that this has come up many times before in the past, and we struck out every time we've asked for it, so we're asking again. Uh, we have, again, sort of the same situation, it's not about quantity, it's about quality. Uh, we have one guidance counselor who services all of our students. In addition to her being the school counselor, she also serves as this tool testing coordinator, which as you know, handles every assessment that comes through our door. Uh, we have not been successful for this in the past, but if we could ask for a secretary in our guidance department to take away the clerical duties, um on top of the, the paperwork piece, so that she could concentrate on her counseling time and enhancing behavior. And again, looking at data, we know that so- social emotional learning is definitely a deficit for all of us, and that's where we'd like her to spend her time, rather than filing and working on paperwork. The last one is a consumable, and I follow Ms. Wheeler's lead, we are asking also for replacement stage curtains and this beautiful divider that you see. Um, the screen is actually hiding some of the damage, I was hoping that you would be able to see that tonight. Um, we promote family involvement, and as a Title I school, we're required to hold four Title I events per year, uh just assigned them, we do one every month, and our parent participation is very high at Matonkin. Many of the events are held right here in our cafeteria, and the curtains on the stage are worn, the divider that pulls across cannot be closed, it is permanently stuck in that position. Um, and to maintain our facilities to learn in a comfortable and safe space, we are asking for stage curtains and a new divider. And that's all I have. Yes, sir?
Uh, Ms. Wheeler, how many uh students do you currently have enrolled?
Uh, without pre-K, we have four seventeen.
How much?
Without pre-K, we have four seventeen.
So well over the amount, or council? Is it like three hundred or two hundred?
I'm not sure, I'll have to help my head, maybe this person might know that.
Is the ratio for student to reading specialist?
Is it? Can somebody help me with that?
What?
Uh, the student ratio, the SOQ for the student to reading specialist?
It is um, it's three, one to three twenty-five, three fifty, but it is proposed, I was on a D-DOT, or on a council's meeting, it is proposed to go to one to two fifty, so.
Yeah, I was asking.
Oh, I don't know the reading specialist. I'm sorry.
I can get that to you. You're welcome.
Who's up next?
Good evening, my name is Diane Kane, and I'm principal of Shinkatik Elementary School. Shinkatik Elementary School students deserve a full-size gym. The Shinkatik Elementary School gymnasium limits the space that our physical education teacher must teach in, as well as the negative physical conditions of the petition, and most recently, um the ceiling. This negatively affects our students' holistic development. Limited space inhibits movement without restriction and has multiple distractions and limitations. Also, with limited space and lack of storage, there are multiple objects in the gym. The CES gym has limitations when compared to a full-size gym, and is therefore considered limited space. The limited space prohibits our students from achieving the full amount of physical activity desire. While in a limited space, there is the ability to do physical activities, but there is a reduction in the intensity of activity and time. It also often does not allow everyone to move at once. Students may have long wait time for turns or move slower to avoid objects and to stay safe. With lack of appropriate movement, the effects limited space has on a child's development start to add up fast. This includes both short and long-term effects. In the short term, students will not get the quality physical education experience that their peers might get. This may be disappointing and frustrating, and cause the students to be more aggressive or more lethargic. Other short-term effects include lack of learning the physical skills needed for their grade-level outcomes, behavioral issues due to being enclosed in a small space, and a general dislike for physical education. Over time, the accumulation of lack of skill, behavior issues, and lack of ability to get the proper intensity and frequency add up to larger problems. Activity times in schools are already down, therefore, I am advocating that the students of Shinkatik Elementary School receive a full-size gymnasium in the very near future. If you've ever been to our school, you will know that our cafeteria and gym together are not as large as this area that we're in right now. So it is a definite, and I'm surprised that um you haven't heard from our parents regarding this is- issue up to this day. In addition to a Shinkatik Elementary School budget, I have some other recommendations, and one would be an additional assistant principal. As you know, we only have a part-time assistant principal at Shinkatik Elementary School. In order to meet the goal of instituting practices which promote a safe and positive learning environment to meet the physical, academic, social, and emotional needs of each student, additional administrative supervision is needed. We have an increasing number of students who are requiring additional time and support from administration. Discipline, discipline measures typically take quite a bit of time to resolve. And also, as a result, additional staff is needed to be able to meet the needs of all students at Shinkatik Elementary School. We also have just as many extracurricular activities and needs as the other elementary schools, however, we don't have as many. However, we don't have as many staff to help staff these events. STEM teacher. By providing a full-time STEM teacher, we would provide our elementary students with access to additional hands-on and problem-based learning activities. Currently, we have an assistant providing STEM. We need someone with training in this area. We need to provide a more rigorous and challenging curriculum in the areas of science and math. Also, we need a full-time secretary. Ms. Bloxum serves as our secretary and our bookkeeper. She does a wonderful job, but just for your knowledge, she never, ever even gets a lunch break because there's no one to even help her in that capacity. We also need parking lot, lights in the parking lot. When at the school of an evening, after an evening event, the parking lot is extremely dark. Sound system? Our sound system is not dependable for programs, et cetera, graduations. So we do need a dependable, upgraded sound system. Stage curtains? Definitely, we need stage curtains. If you look closely, we have mold on our curtains. And we did not talk, we did not talk before we came up with these ideas, so it's just a coincidence that we have similar ideas. Awning. Awning over the sidewalk to protect students from weather elements when going and coming from the buses. This would be an awning like the other elementary schools have, which we do not. Painting of the interior of school is a definite need. Carpets are also a definite need. And we thank you for the opportunity to talk tonight and to listen to our wish list. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. Thank you very much.
I was asking, now, is it snowing outside?
Ooh.
It's raining.
I will try to be very best. My name is Trace. I'm the coordinator for EL, migrant and gifted education. And today I have some requests for tag, EL, and also for translation. So the first one is for an additional tag teacher. Currently, we have 4,456 students, and our SOQs for tag teachers is one teacher per 1,000. And I have three teachers currently. So I was being a little conservative and only asked for one additional teacher instead of two, so maybe that will help. Next, I would also like to request, this will be a one-time purchase, for a appropriate curriculum for reading for our gifted students. They have unique needs, and they need specially-designed instruction as well. And I know sometimes I'm forgotten because we tend to focus on our lower students and what they need, but we also need to meet the needs of our students. One of the additions that we have that, you know, we try to replace is over 20 years old. That would be a good one to spend some money on. The next one is full-time translators or interpreters. We currently have five Spanish and three Haitian Creole hourly translators, and I would like for them to have benefits, you know, a contract, because we have some, we have three that have been with the county for over 10 years, close to 20 years, and all the others have been with us maybe within the last month, last two months because of the turnover. They go to other organizations in the county, for example, Rural Health, you know, other places where they offer full-time benefits. And for example, I just got an email from one of the translators that have been with us for two years, and, you know, she expressed herself, she's a single mom, she needs benefits. So she's trying to interview for other jobs in other places. So if you can think about that, that'd be great. Thank you. Next. I'm also requesting eight English language teachers. These are the new SOQs for staffing for EL students. Before, we used to have one to fifty, and they did not take into consideration the level of the students. Of course, the level one are the lowest students, you know, with the lowest language proficiency, and then, you know, they go all the way to four. And other identifier students are monitor students. So of course, they have a higher ratio for them. Those are the numbers that we have for each of the levels for each student, so September thirtieth. I use September thirtieth because of what the VUE does, the formula they're using based on those numbers. Right now, like you see, I have 1,066 students, which is about 23% of our student population. And next, that's just, you know, my items, how they're supported, or how they go under the strategic plan that we currently have, which is academics communication, you know, for our translators. Any questions?
Did you say you were asking for additional, you know, teachers?
Yes.
How many?
I had eight. Eight teachers.
You have eight, or you're asking for additional eight?
Additional eight. We have 22.
That's a lot of teachers.
That is, because of the new SOQs. And every county in Virginia is going to be facing the same. You know, some counties have to hire like 30 new teachers or 10 new teachers to meet the requirements, you know, set by the governor. And according to the law, we should be getting additional funding, but maybe not for L's.
But two of those eight are unfulfilled in this current?
Yes, we still have two that are unfilled.
That are an advertiser and advertiser, and two are from this year that we weren't able to fill, that we put in there for this year.
Yes. And our high schools, they need additional help. You know, a lot of our L teachers support the counting classes just to make sure our students are graduating on time. So just put in some other resources there. And, you know, it's hard to help them find all the teachers, so teaching, we have some homework. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Anas, the Director of Special Education. A few things that would have been on my budget are being taken care of in other ways. One, with Mr. Whitburn, the address for SSMs for their pay scale, and then the other, because I know you all received a copy, the first item was the secretary, which has already been taken care of as well. So my first official request is a full-time speech and language pathologist. And currently, we have 354 students receiving speech therapy in the division. And the one thing to keep in mind, we have eight. Seven are official SLPs, and one is an SLPA. And so I'm requesting one additional one. We have a very high need for assistive technology, and that's the handout that we've made in our office, and I'm sharing with everybody just to kind of give you a little bit of information of what AT is. We have a lot of requests for that, and in every IEP, we are supposed to consider the AT needs for our students. So it's to the point where we need someone to really kind of take that on as a task. So I would like to make one of the speech pathologists do that part-time, so that would make us need an additional speech therapist. And to think of the duties beyond serving students, they're also responsible for Medicaid billing, they do all of the screenings, they have evaluations, they plan for their therapy, they have to attend all of the meetings, IEP meetings, eligibility meetings, and then any kind of support meetings if there's an area of concern. They write plans of care for every student on their caseload, they write IEPs, they do progress reports. They, for our students that are non-verbal and require communication devices, they also work with insurance companies to try to get devices for students, for them to have them for life beyond school. So an additional speech therapist would be able to help us, be able to provide more support in the area of assistive technology. The second request should sound familiar. Last year, for those of you that were on the Budget Committee, I requested five of these teachers, and since I was unable to get any, this year I've reduced it to two. As you know, every year, we have teachers that we're hiring that are career switchers. So for the September 24, 25 school year, at the start of the year, I had nine teachers with no license, and I had six vacancies. So that gave us 15 teachers' caseloads that other staff that were licensed were responsible for doing all their paperwork. These teachers do not have to do this. They're doing it out of the kindness of their heart. They're expected to do it after their workday because they have their own paperwork to do. And if you think of 15 teachers with an average of 15 students on their caseloads, some much higher depending on the building, you're talking roughly 225 students with paperwork or doing age progress reports, at least wanting an IEP, a potential amendment, you know, any kind of things like that that could come up during the year, is a lot of paperwork. So instead of making the licensed teachers have to do all this additional work, as they have been ever so graciously on their time, they are compensated for that. If you think of all the money we're spending at $50 an hour paying them to do all of this paperwork, if we actually hired two people that that was their job to do all this paperwork for these unlicensed people so that the teachers that are licensed can teach their children instead of focusing on their paperwork plus someone else's while these people are learning and still teaching children. So I would like to request two of those IEP teachers. And then last would be two additional special education teachers. Every year, and I don't know if you remember years ago, some of you that were on the board, we had kind of made a pledge to try to keep caseloads to 15 or less would be the goal. The state regulation is 24. Well, if you could imagine one special ed teacher having 24 students on their caseload, I thought you were going to say so, I'm sorry. It is a tremendous amount of paperwork beyond just trying to run around a building and serve 24 students across the building in multiple grade levels and multiple classrooms. So we've tried to keep the caseloads as close to 15 as possible, and to be able to maintain that, I would like to be able to request two additional special education teachers. So we have some students, Arcadia High School has the largest special education population in the division with over 100 students. And then Nandua High School would be second, and then Kegetake Elementary would be third. Let me think of the number of students that they have. So anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Anas.
Thank you.
So everyone for the Board of Directors. So operating budget is next.
Hello, School Board. Each year, superintendents are required to provide the School Board with a needs-based budget. I believe that's what I'll be presenting tonight. I'm going to keep this presentation brief. Couple reasons. One, you're going to be getting a thick budget book from this only soon, and it contains a lot more detailed information above and down while I'm presenting to you tonight. And that will certainly help you as going into the public hearing and in the work session, you'll have all that information. So I'm just going to present just kind of an overview of what we're requesting. The majority, or the biggest portion of this request has to do with adjusting the teacher pay scale, decompressing the teacher pay scale. But if you look at the first slide, these are the operating budget requests, these are reoccurring pieces of my proposed budget. All total, that's about $910,000. Biggest piece, of course, is the teacher salary scale adjustment. The teacher salary scale adjustment is the 2.357 million represents 3% across the board for teachers, plus about what averages out to be about a 4.2% market adjustment. And that has to do with what I presented last time relative to getting the teacher pay scale to the state average. That's roughly the cost. That's the impact, is about 4.2% for the market adjustment, plus a 3%. So average would be about 7.2% for all teachers. However, it's similar in some respects to doing a compensation study in that some benefit more than others, it depends on how compressed they are. In our case, the most compression is up towards the top of the scale, so they're going to see those teachers theoretically would receive the largest increase because they're the most compressed. But everyone in that scale, for the most part, except for the folks at the very beginning of the scale, would see a significant increase, and it would get us to the state average. And as I mentioned last time, just for full transparency purposes, the 3% increase across the board is roughly what the state average is year to year in terms of what schools, school divisions around the state provide for a pay increase for teachers. It's about 3% year to year. So we're estimating that's what the state average increase would mean, and that's what the increase to the state average salary would be, is about 3%. If that makes sense. The rest are estimates. We don't, they're estimates now because we don't know exactly what we're going to be doing with that $15 per hour adjustment, which TJ is going to be talking more about during the next School Board meeting. But once we have that nailed down, then those numbers will become much more specific and concrete. But we're still in an area now where we're not exactly sure, because we don't exactly sure which option the School Board's going to go with. Once we know that, then we know what exactly what those numbers will be exactly. But you can see, if you take a look at that list, many of those requests and those positions are things that you've heard about tonight. And like with any budget, I've been doing, this is my 16th school budget presentation, so people get what they ask for, and many do not. That's kind of the nature of budgeting. That's when it gets back to the piece of what I mentioned earlier about needs-based budgeting, and that's what we're trying to do, and it's what I'm trying to do tonight. It's presenting with a needs-based budget.
I have a question on the page.
Yeah.
Oh, athletic directors. Legacy Shingate High School added that as well. Athletic directors, two full-time athletic directors, Arcadia and Andrew.
Right, okay, so this is my budget. Sorry, that sounded terrible, didn't it? This is my budget presentation. Once I present this budget to you, you can do whatever you want with it. It becomes your budget. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Appreciate that. Yes, ma'am.
So you may expect, so forgive me if you do, the increase in employee contributions and medical insurance, just so I'm saying this to you in order, because I'm just going to understand.
So that would be, that would help offset what the employers contribute now towards their medical benefits, will just help in that respect. Again, it's a recommendation, you don't have to do it, but it would help offset their expenses. The next slide represents one-time purchases, and again, many of these things you heard about tonight, and these can all be handled through carryover. That list represents about 2.7, nope, that's not right. This, this list represents about $110,000, not the list before. My apologies. This represents all of those things that can be purchased, one-time purchases out of carryover. The two blank spaces are just the things we'd like to do. The one related to concrete border on the track at Arcadia, it's a safety issue, and also potentially is an IDEA issue with special needs students, students in militares, for example. The other, we just need to get a more concrete estimate on the cost, the accordion divider between the cafeteria and gym. We just need to get a better price on that. We don't, we're not quite there yet. But all these things can be paid for through carryover if the Board chooses. And same with this list, except the awning and sentry playground equipment, a lot of that can be paid for out of Medicaid. That's approved expenditure through Medicaid. And the gym at Shingate Elementary School, we put that on the list. Again, that's a big, that's a big price tag. They certainly need it. We're not sure if that's something the Board would want to tackle this coming fiscal year or the next fiscal year, since you're doing two right now. That's kind of a Board preference thing, in terms of when you want to spend that money. You have the money in your reserve, it's just a matter of if you want to spend that much out of the reserve, because you're already spending about 16 million, 17 million for the primary school renovation and then the two other auxiliary gyms. And last but not least, this, this is the, kind of the anticlimactic part of this presentation. The 1.199 million, that's additional money in the revised second year of the binding budget. So right now, as things stay in Richmond, we're receiving an additional nearly $1.2 million dollars from the Governor's budget. two million dollars from the governor's budget. And meeting with the county administrator recently, he indicated that the additional from the county would be three, three hundred and three thousand dollars. So the additional revenues for next fiscal years in San Jose right now will be one point five, two million dollars. And last slide, so the estimated budget that I'm presenting tonight, seventy-five million, five eighty-four, seven forty-three. The estimated shortfall, two million, six seven thousand, six oh five. There's an asterisk attached there because we've been talking, I mentioned to you in the last meeting about, there are a lot of unfilled positions that remain unfilled year to year. There's a lot of them. And when that money's not expended, it just goes into the carryover. What we've done is taken some different scenarios based on how much money is carried over year to year. If we take thirty-five percent of that carryover money this year into next, it is about seven hundred thousand dollars. So that's an option the board has, and that's an option I would recommend is taking about seven hundred thousand dollars from those positions, those unfilled positions, not specific positions, just a lump sum of money, taking seven hundred thousand dollars or thirty-five percent from those lines and apply it towards that shortfall. So that would, in other words, reduce the shortfall by about seven hundred thousand dollars. If that makes sense. And again, you're going to be getting a lot more information in budget book, and it's a lot more than I'm presenting now, but I'm just trying to give you sort of the overview related to presenting budget. That was a lot of talking. Do you all have any questions?
Not a little. Just a second. And if I understand correctly, that the next meeting will have a public hearing?
Yes.
And then we could recess that meeting if you all would like, which I would recommend. We could recess that meeting on the board as how just a budget begin, that next week, which I believe will be here on.
Yes.
And then it would all be buttoned up in the following meetings on eighteen.
That's a great idea and a great opportunity for lots of end-up discussion coming out of the public hearing.
Madam Chair. So my, thank you all for all those details. So item six point oh one won't let me get in. Is there anything that would be asked of the program tonight?
Yes. Would be asked of the project.
You're, you're not, you're not approving, you're just accepting my, my proposed budget, you're not approving it. So it's just kind of a formality. You're accepting my proposed, but the approval comes after you all settle on your final budget. It's, it's, it's not my budget you're approving, you're just taking it and then it's yours. You can do with it what you like.
Would it be fair for me to just say that? I, I, you know, I, I didn't see this. I don't know that it was here. I only have like, I'm seeing this for the first time, and I'm hearing and saw some of the content that was presented earlier. So if I don't support, it's not because I'm not supported, this is a lot to absorb in a very short period of time.
Yes, and I, and that's to Ms. Turner's point, it's, it's always a personally good idea to have that hearing, take it in, digest, think about it, have another meeting, have an actual work session, and get into the minutia, and you have more time to do that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jordan, did you want to talk about your absenteeism report? It's kind of self-explanatory.
Yeah.
Are there questions about the absenteeism report? I, I, I don't have a question about the report. I'm just trying to understand, what are we comparing this to? I mean, I don't, I don't know why. I mean, what's our, our yardstick, our measure?
Okay. Good evening, everyone. This is about the attendance. As of right now, just to get a pulse of where we possibly would be to make the accreditation for everyone, what we're really comparing it to is the eighteen is the number that the state looks at, the eighteen chronic absenteeism numbers. So what we did was looked at all the schools with their eighteen and just getting a pulse of the percentage where we are right now. To keep in mind that we still do credit recovery, so we alternate that on the Saturdays. Students who do stay after school also, so at the end of the year, all of the schools will put all of the students who came to Saturday school on a document that the state will pull to give us, like, for example, if I went for two Saturdays, high school, that's three hours equals one day off, and for an elementary is two hours if they attend. So this is just giving us where, a gauge of where we are at this point, getting on it to move forward into the second semester. So we've been rolling attendance meetings, everything has been still happening weekly with us. I think I'm out. We are meeting almost every day. And for the tenants and parents, we're doing the chin, you know, report, and they're going into truancy diversion at their middle school. So we've been on it to try to curtail it, but as soon as they hit eighteen, whether it's excused or unexcused, anything is still going to impact. So that's what we need to just monitor, how many students have those, including the OSS days as well.
Just one more question, just the, are there stand-in schools that meet with these students that are frequently absent? I mean, someone sitting down with them and saying, is there a reason? I mean, I never, I understand that we're communicating with parents, and like the parent said that the child was absent, but is anyone addressing with the child, the student, does anybody addressing with the student?
So I think at most of the schools, that they all have their attendance teams, and there's one admin who's over attendance in each of the buildings. So when the council is, when they meet and they have, they send me the list of students who are on the radar, that's when the conversation is going to start happening, especially if they're going to owe the credit recovery, they're talking to them about their absences and letting them know. The attendance appeal committee just went around on the sixteenth and seventeenth last week to all of the high schools. We met with three, two parents at one of the schools, and then we assigned credit recovery hours. So it's a lot of conversation because we're, everybody has done an excellent job out the gate doing credit recovery at the secondary schools. So I would say, yes, there is someone there because they're letting them know their hours that they can assign, the deadline to get those hours completed, or the grades will be at fifty-seven F because we do have attendance failure here in Acomet County. So yes.
Yes, ma'am.
To speak to that, we personally at Nandua, we have, Mr. McGregor, I'm not sure if you know, he emails each student who has credit recovery, who needs credit recovery, and he'll email us the amount of hours that we need for credit recovery. We, I don't know if we have a deadline. He never sends us a deadline by how many hours we need to have, so I'm not sure if he's made it to do that or not. But he never sent emails to people who have credit recovery who have a deadline by, they just tell us how many hours we need to have, and that's pretty much it. He says, you need to do this, or you're regular out. So.
So the deadline is going to be February the twenty-eighth, which will be the, we let them go over, some students have more, they would be more time than trying to get it done in this semester. So if it goes over into the second semester, that February twenty-eighth is a Friday, that twenty-second is another Saturday session. So we try to give them ample time to get hours in. Some students will use the days that we're out coming up on the twenty-fourth and twenty-seventh. So however the students can fit, and on top of after school, just as long as they get it completed and the deadlines, we'll keep up, we'll let everybody know now as the twenty-eighth, and that's been communicated. So we've all been staying on it, collective effort with our attendance truancy team, which is myself, Kim, and whichever social worker is there, the over-south end, and then the admin, the meetings went very well on the sixteenth through seventeenth. Letters will be going out from central office probably next week. So we're rolling, and we think we monitor, even if we try to tell them it's not about us taking them to court, because that's what we don't want, but when they hit those numbers, even as many parents can verify the days, to verify hers too, because if you're not there, you're not there. So that's what it's looking like now, right now.
Thank you.
Yes. I do have a question for you. So Mr. McGregor, he was talking to the seniors about the credit recovery hours, that they have late in or early out. He said they could use them for that. How would that specifically work? Like the times, how would that work?
So since the, most of the time, we'd like them to be after-school hours or not during school. For example, if you have a fourth block class, we wouldn't want you to do it there. So if you have a late in, you're technically not in school yet until you go to your first class, which maybe you want second block or third block, you can use that time because you're not technically in class until the third block. And then once we have early hours, why, instead of leaving, just stay there and do your hour then because you're not taking up from another teacher's class. And then we do prefer after-school hours and then, you know, the secondary schools. You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Johnson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. So just giving you a little update on the search for superintendent, and we do have a PowerPoint here coming up. So the first thing I have is a stakeholder survey. This is something that one of the board members had requested, and we did design a survey, I did email it to everyone for you to review. The survey is designed to gather input from the community, from stakeholders, teachers, parents, community members, staff. When we gather that information, you can use that information when you're, you know, looking to hire the next superintendent. What does the community, what's the community looking for in the next superintendent? So much, much like the surveys that we've done in the past, we just did a survey on the school calendar, we can use the same instruments, put that out, gather the data, and then maybe at one of the board meetings next month, I can report out after leaving it up for a certain amount of time for people to give input. Okay? So the, the survey has areas such as leadership, vision, management and operations, equity and inclusion, any kind of personal qualities of the new superintendent, and experience. I know that was a discussion item too. Did anybody have any, any questions or anything about the, the survey? Okay, good. All right. I did design, this is also a request of one of the board members, a rubric for selecting the candidates for interviews. So we have a number of applicants, and the idea being that each one of you like make an appointment to come in and review, once we, once it closes, come in, review all the applications, and then you can score each, each applicant with a rubric so that we can narrow that down so you're not interviewing, I'm just, I'm not saying this is a number, I'm saying hypothetically, you're not interviewing twenty people because that would take forever. So you're narrowing down some of the applicants to, I don't know, three to five that you want to actually grant an interview, maybe more. If you see, maybe there's eight really good applicants that you want to interview, that's fine. But this rubric will help you to narrow those choices down and, and select the top applicants to go on to the next phase. Did anybody have any questions about that? Okay, the rubric contains some things similar to what the survey contains, okay? Educational background, credentials, leadership, student achievement, communication, financial management, budget, right? Community engagement, and any professionalism or end or ethics. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Do you want to say anything about your, your dashboard is pretty self-explanatory.
Yeah, you know, if you have any questions, let me know, but if not, you can just have a look at it.
I appreciate that. I appreciate the look back here.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I just, Mr. Johnson, I just wanted to say thank you for, you know, considering the different suggestions that have come forward and for answering the questions that I asked.
Remember, this is your hire, so if you have any specific request or anything like that, this is, I'm at your disposal.
I appreciate that. And then up, the next item is the superintendent's survey.
And I'm going to be extremely brief, and you don't need to take any action on this. I just want to let you know, we're kind of in a weird situation. We have exams coming up, and then a teacher workday coming up. So with the weather, I just wanted to get sort of your tacit approval on, if we miss school tomorrow, what we would like to do is count it as a snow day, and then exams for middle and high school students will be Thursday and Friday this week, which means there will be no staff development day, and then the new semester would start Tuesday, January twenty-eighth. So the teacher workday would be moved from Friday to Monday, and the semester would start on Tuesday. Okay, so that's, and this is just weird, kind of difficult because of the exam piece. And so if we miss tomorrow, we'd like to do that. If we miss Wednesday and Thursday, again, we want to count these as snow days, not virtual days. Exams for middle and high school students will be Friday and Monday. Teacher workday will be Tuesday, January twenty-eighth. No staff development day, and the new semester would start Wednesday, the twenty-ninth. And the one missed school day will be added at the end of the school year unless the board decides to take it from somewhere else in the calendar, like spring break, or, which is never popular, but perhaps somewhere else on a day off. Plan C would be the worst-case scenario, which is we miss school Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. It would be, those would also be snow days, no virtual days. Exam for middle and high school students will be Monday and Tuesday, teacher workday on Wednesday, the twenty-ninth. No staff development day. Semester would start on Thursday, and the two, two missed days will be added at the end of the school year unless the board decides to do something differently. Don't, I don't expect that that would happen, but you never know with the weather. Hopefully, it would just be at the worst one day, meaning tomorrow, I understand it's snowing right now, so I'm trying to be brief here, but unless there's major heartburn with this, this is the approach we would like to take.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next up is the acceptance of the superintendent's proposed funding year twenty-six operating budget.
Madam Chair, I agree that we accept the superintendent's proposed operating budget for twenty-six.
Sorry? I'd like to make some second discussion on it. So again, on accepting or not accepting each item is, is what's going to happen. We can still add things, or we can still take things out? Right now?
You can add things right now.
Okay.
So the total that was there tonight, that is, that is our max. So if you wanted to go back, Jessie, like you said, and add athletic director at Chinkinig High School, our max cannot be more than that, but you see our funding is not more than that, you know, so we're going to have to go down. So we have this two million dollar area here, but you can add things, but at some point when we get the final revenues, we're going to have to cut things, and that's when the real work on, on the budget comes, is when we get the final revenues. You can still add things, but we cannot adopt a budget more than that, whatever that amount was that Dr. Jack had up there. So you could add things now if you so choose, and then it would be in the book that you'll get, or you can consider it and consider a public hearing. That creates a limit.
I want to approve without, I'll leave through the preschool, we each have an athletic director, because all three have, you know, requirements for athletic.
What are you saying?
I'd like to add athletic director.
Okay.
Can I say something?
Yes.
I think you're going to be adding and taking away a lot of things.
Sure, but I don't want to start it.
Well, that has just started, we can, we, tonight is the adding and there's no taking away.
You can, but you're, remember, you're not approving this budget as the true budget, you're just accepting it, now it becomes your budget. So it goes from being my budget to being your budget.
So we still have the public hearing thing?
Yeah, we still have time to tweak our budget.
Yes.
To get Jessie's athletic director.
You can add or take away anything.
Just add. We've done it.
Can, can we, is there a random fact to add an athletic director?
Well, it would go on top of, it would go on top of what Dr. Jack presented.
So if you have more, less, or too many, we show.
And that's, that's fine, you know. We can do that.
Okay.
So the things that the school's meeting tonight asked, we can't add some of them next time? I'm trying to figure out.
Okay. This is, this is-
This is, this is, this is why the staff presentations, when they coincide with my budget presentations, they put their requests and my proposed budget kind of at odds, which is fine. That's the way it is, but you still have ten, well, you have several more budget presentations coming from staff. So they're gonna be asking for additional things that we've already received. We've already received all the budget requests, reviewed them, made up my, made my own or our own decisions about what should, should be included. But you can add anything you like. Like, when, when you have your public hearing, you're gonna get more input from constituents. Um, and then, as Ms. Turner mentioned, there ought to be another work session where you really dig into this. At that time, you can, you can add things, you can take things away. You can talk about things that were presented during the public hearing. Uh, we can give you all the requests that were made, there was a lot of requests that were made. We just pared them down to the things that we felt were necessary, were needs-based. But tonight, all you're, this is just a transition from my proposed budget to your, your budget to work with. That's all you're doing tonight. So we can add that, and just add to the, you know, I can amend my presentation and add it, it'll just increase the bottom line to seventy-seven, seventy-five million. Just add, uh, seventy thousand dollars, just, uh, to the bottom line.
Yeah, I'm just waiting to be left in.
I'm sorry, I'm not, you're cursed. You're, you're deep in thought. I'm over here, I'm, I'm over here.
Thank you. Um, so, first, um, I raised my hand just to, um, and then a second thing to support my colleagues' requests for that addition. Um, and then, I, I just wanna say that, um, I'm very thankful for the explanation of, um, I'm, I'm repeating what, what I saw. The, the various presentations coupled with the superintendent's budget, it kinda makes my mind go puff. Like, 'cause I'm looking back at the presentations from last time, and I'm thinking, well, what about Laura Schrader, and what about this, and what about that? So that's just my plea, again, saying that I'm, I'm overwhelmed. I, I understand, I wanted to say that I understand that we're being asked to accept the superintendent's budget, and I, I do acknowledge that all the requests have been considered.
Mr. Attorney General, would you like to make a friendly amendment?
Yes, I'd like to amend the, um, so I'd like to do that case.
Now, you have made the motion, so it has to be...
Yes, I'd like to, um, withdraw my motion.
Okay, so, Jesse, would you, Mr. Mr. Parker's motion has been withdrawn.
I'd like to amend, um...
Would you like to make a motion to sound the budget amended?
Yes, that, well, you're, you're in the amendment of, um, adding the athletic director to Champaign High School.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Uh...
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
HR consultant is up next. Ms. Jackson, Ursula Boden, would you like to address that?
Yeah, um, I just, I had a, a remark, so I wanted to, to say about it. Um, in light of the, um, superintendent's report from the last meeting, um, I think it makes it clearer now, um, some more reasons why we, why we should have an HR consultant. Um, not only could this person, um, provide an objective input into our salary scales that we're working on, it could also assist us, um, as we, um, transition to the new, the permanent superintendent, and also, there's another piece that's gonna come in with that, which, um, Dr. Jack mentioned last time, which was, um, looking at doing a reorganization, um, in central office. And I, I just really feel like our school system should run well and be efficient in serving the students, um, to maximize their educational experience and contribute to their overall well-being. And to get there, our system desperately needs maintenance. Um, and as an analogy, um, we do a conversation study every several years. There, the last one before, the one we just had, was about a decade ago. And I feel like reorganizing should also be done every so, several years. One of the reasons is that a lot of the things that can happen, um, just over the years, when a new and an immediate staffing need crops up, um, a lot of times, the easiest and quick way to, um, fix that is just to create and fill a new position. Um, and, and this has been, been happening recently. Within the last few months, we've been creating some new positions. And while that is a quick and easy solution, it's not always the best one. Uh, the best thing is, um, to do the research, to look at our local data and determine, one, if a new position truly is needed, if that position should be temporary, if it should be permanent, should it be full-time, should it be part-time? Is there any way that an existing, uh, staff person or persons could take on additional duties? They might have shifting priorities, they might, might have changes in the workloads that allow for that. And they might not, but we need to look into it. Um, so what happens is, when we just kinda keep making new positions and don't do our due diligence, uh, we can, sometimes we can wind up with duplicated services, or the worst thing is, we can have competing priorities, and we don't want that, um, for our students. So I feel like a reorganization does become necessary, and I don't even, I have no idea when the last time that was done. Um, and I really want to make sure that every position we have is necessary, that the duties, um, of each position are being performed effectively by qualified people. So every time we have an open position, I want it to be filled by the most qualified candidate, and every employee that we have should be paired off with the job that is best suited to their education and skills and experience. So we're looking to hire a superintendent who will work with us to do this reorganization and to build shared goals for Aggie County Public Schools. No more division. The assistance of an HR professional will be necessary to this effort. And an outside consultant will be the, the best way to go about this, um, for two main reasons. One, our current HR person is dealing with a lot of immediate pressing issues. So we have, um, complex personnel matters going on, among other things. And two, our current HR person is an employee in central office who also works closely on a daily basis with other people in central office. So it would be great if we could have an outside consultant, um, just to allow for objectivity and to avoid conflict of interest. So, and, and that's just kind of skinning the surface, but those are, those are my thoughts.
Other remarks?
I, I have to go ahead, Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
First of all, I just, I wanna acknowledge what I heard tonight, which is actually different than the rationale that we are, last week was actually markedly different than the rationale last week for an HR consultant, most specific, more specifically, last week when this was raised. The rationale that I understood was to, um, about the pay scales. My recall, and the minutes reflected this, is that, um, the current HR leader indicated that he would hate to see us spend money on a position that we don't need. Beyond that, I would say that in light of the fact that we are currently recruiting for a new superintendent, and in view of the fact that this board's one employee, the only employee we have is a superintendent, I would hope that this board would have the good sense and the good graces to wait until we have that superintendent in place and let him or her make decisions about what the organizational needs are within. Oh, and I'm sorry, the very last thing is, I cannot imagine, and this is actually educated opinion, that we'd be able to get a consultant for any less than eighty thousand, maybe seventy, seventy-five. Um, the last consultant that we hired, you know, for a specific purpose, was six figures, if I recall. And I would really prefer strongly to see funds, you know, of that magnitude spent in a way that would directly benefit the children.
Thank you. Wonder if any other remarks?
Can we have, thank you, Mr. Johnson, looking to seeing what, what some of the costs they'd be to do among the parameters of this, this, this investment?
My impression is that the need would just be, it would just be temporary. It would not be an ongoing need, nor would it necessarily be full-time. There would be specific tasks assigned, but let me be clear, Mr. Johnson has things that he needs to be doing, as Ms. Boden stated, he has some very complex, time-consuming employee relation matters that he has to take care of. He also is new to this position and is pursuing, I'm assuming, additional training that takes time, as well as he has other duties that include, um, I don't know if anybody's noticed this, but we have policies that I think, uh, we have not approved. For some reason, the HR person is the policy person, and we have, uh, we have not approved policies from the V S B A in several months, and things like that are falling behind. So if we could hire a part-time, temporary HR consultant to help with specific tasks, I think that would be a big help, Mr. Johnson.
The way I understand this, when you hire a consultant, a part-time consultant, they need a scope of, um, of, of, of a task. Uh, so it has to be very specific, and you have to say, hey, this is your task. Build this, review this, um, so on and so forth. It, it, so there has to be, there has to be some task and something that they're producing for you. So I think that's, that would be up to the board to, you know, come up with those items for said person to, um, to do, to give you a product that you're gonna pay for.
That, that is the wrong statement. Our job is only the superintendent. Your responsibility, you want this position, you come up with the parameters, then you bring it to Dr. Jack. And he will bring it to us, that this is what the HR person requests. Right now, you bring it to the board, if you want us to give you parameters to do your job, which is not our job. Our job is to prove what Dr. Jack bring us that he would like to have. So I feel, if you want this position, have your request and bring it to him. If he approves it, he will bring it to us. 'Cause right now, it's more, we're telling you, we need this, this, and this, when I think you should bring that to Dr. Jack. He said, "HR person would like to have this," and then it would be short and fast. Right now, this is a third, on the third week for the same thing, which I think could've been done in one week.
I believe the board is allowed to hire consultants.
But we are, we're going day-to-day operations. We are not, he hasn't even told, basically, Dr. Jack already brought it to us, it's the HR. That is not our responsibility. We are only one employee, Dr. Jack, and we are not following those rules. Day-to-day operations is not the board's responsibility.
Is there a motion for the HR consultant?
Madam Chair, move that we look into a HR consultant, help assist.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
I didn't understand it. I'm sorry. He said, "We are moving, we are moving to look into," is that the same thing as I? I need clarity when I'm here.
Are we in the discussion?
Yes. Yes.
So, the, the request for HR consulting came from the school board. Since I am your only employee, you're, what you're really doing is you're directing me to investigate hiring an HR consultant. But, um, the scope, to Mr. Johnson's question, the scope in terms of what is exactly we're trying to get from the consultant, that's gonna determine how much it costs. So, when we speak to and ask is the, the company that are recommending that we talk to because they're typically inexpensive, and they do a wide variety of consult consultations related to HR, they're gonna wanna know exactly what is it that you're looking for? Like, exa- what is it exactly that you want? So that really, all due respect, needs to come from you, 'cause you're requi- you're asking, you're directing me to have, to reach out, find this person or this company, and do this consulting work. But to that point, we need to know exactly what it is we're telling him to give us. And my understanding now is, correct, if I'm wrong, examine our pay scales, look at our pay scales, and see if...
They don't have pay scales, that's the one. We have, we have ranges, we don't have pay scales.
We, we recently put, uh, the administrative pay scale, because they're not at any risk of changing. We recently put them on the website.
Okay.
Um, we also have, we're currently discussing the classifieds, and, uh, once we get clarity, move forward with those, you know, some finality, they will be released on the website as well. Uh, I can email all of you, the ones we currently have, we just have to release to the public all the pay scales, uh, tomorrow, uh, that we currently have. It's not, we're trying to hide them, again, like, just like last time, we're just trying to, uh, have some, some finality to it so that we can release them and not have to take them back down and put them back up and all that stuff.
Madam Chair, um, if we're still in the discussion phase, so to the motion that's on the table, I don't understand what it is that we would be asking the interim superintendent to, 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 um... I, I don't, I don't have an understanding of what it is we're asking the superintendent to, to go investigate. I have not seen anything in writing that describes the scope, the duties. I heard some things shared, and I can acknowledge Ms. Boden sharing. This board has gone on record to say that we don't wanna make decisions hurriedly, that we don't wanna hear information in one meeting and make a decision. I'm sure there will be exceptions to that. I, I'm asking if my colleagues would certainly consider, can we first understand what we're asking the interim superintendent to do before we ask him to do it? Because I am not clear, and I, I could be alone, but I mean, I do process information usually under normal circumstances quite well.
Because personally, like I say, I'm hearing, I didn't hear, like I say, all I heard was what he had there, uh, what we heard the first time. But now, I'm hearing, hearing that it came from board, I don't remember hearing nothing from the board, unless the board's having another discussion other than with the, maybe, I don't know, I don't hear anything.
You, we, we talked about this last, in our last meeting last week.
We didn't have these specifics. Now, how do we get these specifics when we didn't even discuss those in the last meeting? We did check about the, our HR position consultants, but some of these specifics that come up now, well, I wasn't informed, I haven't gotten no email or no text anything of this, so if you go on something like this, I mean, I'm sorry. It's, it wasn't done the right way, I'm sorry, it's not in the right context, we need to go on something that I'm not prepared to know until today.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Um, I didn't get any email or anything either, it was my understanding that this is Ms. Boden's thoughts, she's all looking like this is the first time any of us have heard it. I knew there was a motion I'm gonna take on the floor, and I believe there was a second. But again, it goes back to making decisions at a split second. I would like to not compute this, I did, and I mean, I don't wanna shoot it down, but I will approve it tonight either, so. And I mean, I don't want to shoot it down, but I will approve it in a year or so. I knew there was a motion on the floor, I don't have his words, but that's my thoughts.
So we could, I just wish I could postpone this till the next meeting? Yes, sorry.
And then, the next meeting, going back, what the scope will be?
Yes, yes. But it would start, you know, it would include detailed salary scales. Like, and I don't mean two or three, I mean, there are school divisions that have fifteen salary scales. That's what we need. We need one for bus drivers, one for the cafeteria, all of the things that Ms. Bowman said. TJ is, to me, is placeful, and, you know, now, on, he's new, he's still adjusting, but things are not getting done, I'm, you know. Madam Chair, I, I appreciate you not acknowledging the perspectives there. I have heard so much in terms of the needs that the principals and the department chairs have. I, I just feel like, I'm only expressing my opinion, which is, I would ask not only for scope, but a justification so far as the prioritization of this need compared to what has also been presented.
Okay, we will have that the next meeting.
I'd like to withdraw my motion to this as a meeting, uh, discuss.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I believe the motion's been seconded, so I think you need to vote on it. So you can vote it, you can vote it down, but it's already been seconded, and you had a discussion.
Are they, are they just seconded now?
Yes.
Yes.
So you can, just, I would recommend you vote it, vote it down, and new motion.
Motion is seconded, to hire the HR consultant. All in favor? Opposed? Next up is the superintendent's report. I'm sure there's quite a good stuff, so.
Okay, the report was the, those three options I gave you related to the counter.
School board member comments, Mr. Spidey.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. I, I do, I'm sorry, it's not already on the card. Just, me and Jesus are going to go home. I want to first probably thank Ms. Bowman, and if I say that much, I mean, we had a drink earlier, you know, before the temperature came in to drop it at this point, I mean, I'm, I'm here now. I want to probably thank Ms. Bowman for following up, as she indicated last meeting, leading the effort to assess student photo combed up and discipline. I really appreciate that, I want to say thank you. Next item, I attended the monthly county audit committee meeting last Thursday. I emailed highlights to the chair, to Dr. Jack, copied the vice chair and the one CC, the board members, I haven't received any questions. I want to give kudos to Ms. Only. She thanked her finance team, and I want to give kudos to her for her role in needing the January first date to implement payroll in that new system. I, lastly, just want to say that, Dr. Jack, I did, I did email you a complaint or anything, but I, I plan on supporting schools activities increasingly. That's an area for improvement that I would like to acknowledge. And before I come out to any of the schools, I know I don't have to, but I want to extend the courtesy of making sure that the interim superintendent knows where I'm going, because I don't want there to be a question when I show up, you know, about why I'm there. I want to be more supportive, that's all I have tonight.
I don't have anything except to say thank you to the, the students who were here tonight. I live for those moments. Also to thank the school board members who came to the NAACP's Martin Luther King Memorial Ceremony on yesterday. We had a little over, close to two hundred and fifty people in attendance, so that went really well. And also, the JR OTC students actually presented colors at the ceremony yesterday. So they said it was really nice.
That's great. Next week, I just want to put this out there for everybody to think about over the next week. We have, we're going to be looking at our committee assignments, and I think they, so that your term is up on your committee, and there are one, there's an opening on the SPAN committee, and there's also an opening on the TAC committee, so if anyone is interested, contact me. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
I just want to say thank you for the-
I'm, I'm sorry. Were you referring to my timing up on a committee?
Mr. Spidey.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Taylor.
I want to say thank you for the JR OTC coming out tonight to speak. Doing the presentation, especially the one gentleman that really had a lot of knowledge. Also, I want to thank all the staff who are not conceding, helping with the budgets. I liked that presentation, it's really good to be up here from the actual schools and, you know, for that, and that process. And then that, everybody, I say, I'd like to thank the media.
I also like to thank everybody that, that gave the JR OTC, they had a very good job. I said at the end, they basically, they was very well, and it was very well received at Agman County, you guys, that programs, they were very, very helpful, and, I didn't say I heard from them, but they will be sending some donations that way. Also, I just feel this public comment is at the bottom. We got people here, still here, just wanting their comments. Especially we got a bus driver, he got to get up in another six hours. And I feel this bad that he's sitting here this long just on that comment. I would request the light to please move public comment back up to the top. So we, the people that voted us in here to get a chance to speak earlier than wait till the end of the night, and to speak, thank you.
Just kind of grate everybody else, I really appreciate the JR OTC, they seem like, appreciated all the effort the principals and the, and the directors put into their budget and presentations. And just food for thought, I don't know about you guys, I could phone up some central parents this morning, they were very concerned about their children standing outside of their classroom, which is very, 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 food for thought, and I believe you made a decision.
Just to thank everybody for coming out, like everyone else said. It's cold. It's really cold. But that's kind of it, it's really cool.
And just a reminder for everyone who may want to leave a public comment, or who's listening at home, we did, the school board did earlier last year pass that anybody can submit a public comment to the clerk by email, and she will be happy to read it into the public record. John Robinson.
Say good evening to everyone in the school board. My name is John Robinson, and I bring Bush to Kenya. I came tonight, I've been really upset, but I'll tell you, you guys tonight did some things that I didn't think that we were doing, like pushing stuff under the rugs and stuff like this. And you put that there so that everybody knows what's going on, and I like that. Because I have been in the past, and you can sweep your stuff under the rugs and this kind of stuff, and it's very upsetting. Because you do things, and people don't know what's going on, and trying to figure out why this is happening, that is happening. So tonight was a pleasing night, to see you do things a little bit different than what you have been doing. I'm so glad, I don't know what to do. Getting horse drivers, they do, I like it. One other thing I want to say is, I've heard some comments going around, but the bus shop don't have any kind of organization or the things out of control. And I'm going to tell you to everybody right here, how wrong you are. We are in more control than we've been in years, and I've been driving buses twelve years. Mr. Reader has really changed the bus shop. People think that he's not in control, and they don't respect him, that is so far from the truth. Because if he didn't, a lot of your kids would be still sitting home, wanting to try to get to school, or trying to get home next from school. So what he asks us to do, we talk about it, we may disagree, but on the end, we do what needs to be done. To me, that's great respect. See, I think the county should spend some money on all the leaders in the town to take a day of honor to the course, because a lot of you don't know how to separate friendship from your work positions. See, I took that course years ago for you, it was mandatory. And it teaches you how to still keep your friends and do your job. Because if you lose your job, your friends not going to pay your bills. So you have to let them know, work is work, and we can play later. You know, we, we need to get on the right track, and it looks like you're making it start. I'm pleased with that. Because I have been some time, I've had different kids that I have on my bus I had quit four or five years ago. I have great kids. I do, I do five bus runs a day. That's a lot. So I thank you guys for the opportunity.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Robinson. You're welcome.
Good evening, everybody. I too am happy to see and to hear the cohesiveness of this meeting. Sometimes we go back to old ways, and I'm praying that this will not happen. Our children were able to read an article that talked about some things that this school board did that were not correct. And if the children are your main concern, this should never happen again. We should be honest with each other, we should be fair with each other, and we should be polite with each other. We can do better, and we need to do better. We need to show it. These educators tonight came with proposals, and they've done a lot of work. My sister was an educator for like forty years, and she's here now working at Agman County. And I have seen her sit up late at night and do things. She would come from Richmond, she would bring some papers, and I would help her correct them, and we would go over some things. And so I know that this is not just a thing hazardly done. And so I commend the educators, really I do. And I am commending you for appearing to be doing better. Let's just keep that thing rolling. I want to beat a dead horse, but if I have to, I will. So let's do better, let's do better, and show respect for one another. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Harper.
I promise this brief. First off, I would like to thank Dr. Jack for pointing out the difference between his budget proposal to you, and that he gives it now to you all for it to become your budget. In the past, it's always been the superintendent's budget. And now, obviously, we have everybody presenting what they would like you all to know that they need, which is not, that's something new this year. And I appreciate y'all being able to let us hear that. As a division, I've listened to the SPAN budget, and obviously, you know that's my, that's my forte. As a division, we can provide and finance the services that the students need now. Or you can pay for the litigation to explain why you didn't later. And I would like for y'all to remember that when you're going through your budgets. I would like to echo the need for the stage curtains at Shinkate Elementary School. For the past few years, I have decorated various events at that school. The curtains stink, they're dirty, they smell like formaldehyde. When you're trying to decorate the curtains, and you take your hands away, and your hands are black. And the blue curtains, you know, that's, that's an issue. So I just wanted to really echo that. And lastly, I'd like to also echo the need for the athletic director at Shinkate combined. And it would be really nice if they could also be a PE person, because right now, they're sharing their PE person with the elementary school, and he has to go back and forth, and he barely makes it back to the elementary school to do his duties there. So that would be really great if we could find that person, and they could do that duty. I really care, as long as they're there. And that's all, and enjoy yourself. Nope, sorry.